Six thirty, Monday, September twenty first for our Board of Aldermen meeting. If we could, I'll call it in session and I would ask you to roll call, please. Eric?
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Present.
Alderman Wilkins?
Present.
Alderman Motley? Alderman Hudson?
Here.
Alderman Stevens?
Here.
All right, if everybody have a rise to the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. I think before we get too far, I'd like to move up the item nine, under mayor appointments for the tree board. I would like to move that up to now, beginning so that those folks can leave the children and so forth. Is there a problem with that?
So moving.
Second.
All right, all in favor of moving the agenda?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so we'll move down immediately down to under new business appointments for the tree board. I have Chris Lawson here this evening, correct? Chris, if you'd stand up. I would like to point you to the tree board. It's my recommendation, I'd like to do that.
So Lawson?
Lawson, Lawson. Yes, that's the phone line, correct?
Make motion we approve the mayor's appointment of Chris Lawson to the tree board.
Go ahead.
The first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes, welcome, and thank you for your service and want to join the tree board. We appreciate it, we'll be getting information to you who the chair of the committee is and that kind of thing, so you can kind of get lined out on that, okay? And that moves us to Cody Beasley, who's here as well. This is Cody Beasley, he expressed an interest as well, and both are, I think, well suited and interested in agriculture and trees and the things that we need for that group, I don't exactly what you call it, it's almost sound foolish, so. Anyway, farmers, they're farmers, that's what they are. So anyway, I would like to recommend Cody Beasley to also join that committee as well.
Motion we approve the mayor's appointment of Cody Beasley to the tree board.
Go ahead.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Welcome, Mr. Beasley, you're on the tree board, we'll get you information. After the meeting, we'll get you some catch-up this week, and I'll get you some information of who the chair is and that kind of thing, so you guys can make contact, introduce yourself, and kind of go from there, does that make sense? Okay, guys, thank you so much, thank you for coming as well. Now we'll move back up to presentation of the annual budget. Oh yeah, audit. For twenty nineteen, twenty twenty by Williams Keepers.
Guess we'll see. Okay, I promise I will say this, short and sweet. I'm sure Linda is disappointed to hear that, so, yes, I'm Amanda Schultz with Williams Keepers. We recently completed the audit of the city's financial statements for the fiscal year that ended March thirty first, twenty twenty. As I mentioned jokingly earlier, the financial statements are a lot smaller than they have been in the past, and that's because the city changed faces of accounting during the year, so I'll talk about that a little bit during my presentation. All of the audit reports are included in your blue book there, but we'll just go over the summary reports this evening. Could you let me know if you have any questions or comments? So starting with the financial statements, we issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements again this year. In our opinion, the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with the modified cash basis of accounting. This is a basis of accounting other than U.S. generally accepted accounting principles or GAAP, but our opinion is not modified with respect to this matter. So this is still the best opinion that you can get, the users of the financial statements can rely upon them as well as the notes that are included to support the financial statements. So jumping down a few bullet points real quick, as of April first, two thousand nineteen, the beginning of the city's fiscal year, the city began preparing its financial statements on the modified cash basis of accounting. The primary differences are that capital assets and long-term debt, the pension plan information related to loggers and a variety of other balances and transactions are no longer reported. Also, the effects of outstanding receivables and payables aren't included in the financial statements. So we didn't include any summarized financial statement information in the summary report this year. It'd kind of be like comparing apples to oranges under these two different bases of accounting, but we'll include that summary next year to show two different years of presentation under this new modified cash basis of accounting. If you'd like some more information on that change, there is a note included in the financial statements on page twenty eight. It's footnote fourteen, that kind of describes the change in that basis of accounting and the impact that it had on the city's financial statements. Are there any questions about that change before I move on? So management is ultimately responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. We did prepare the financial statements again this year, they were reviewed and approved by management and accepted as their representation. We used our judgment in determining how to audit the city again this year, so we performed a risk assessment process and focused our attention on areas where the financial statements could be materially misstated. So except this in the past, that means we don't look at every account balance or every transaction that we do enough work in order to be able to give that unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. We take a look at accounting policy, the standard in accounting estimates, and the overall financial statement presentation as a part of a financial statement audit. The last bullet point on the first page of this summary report notes that typically governmental financial statements will be presented as government-wide financial statements, fund financial statements, and notes to the financial statements. So there's usually several sets of actual financial statements included, but since the city is now preparing its financial statements on the modified cash basis of accounting, there is only fund financial statements and notes to the financial statements included, because those fund financial statements provide more detail than the government-wide financial statements will. So that's one reason why they're short this year. Okay, I went through that really quickly, and there was obviously a change with the basis of accounting conversion this year. Any questions on the financial statements before I move on to our other reports? The next page of the summary report starts with our auditor's communication letter, and this is a letter that we issue each year, and it just includes various comments about the audit process that we are required by our professional standards to communicate to the governing board of an organization, and the Board of Aldermen serves that role for the city. We did not note any transactions that we considered both unusual and significant, and there was no change in actual accounting policies during the year, although the city did begin utilizing modified cash basis of accounting. We evaluated the estimates affecting the financial statements. Now that the financial statements are utilizing the modified cash basis of accounting, there aren't many significant or sensitive estimates that impact them. The only one is really the disclosure of commitments and contingencies coming up with the estimate for that disclosure. We did evaluate the disclosures in the financial statements and made sure all of the required disclosures are included. So even though there are a variety of balances and transactions that aren't included in the financial statements now under the modified cash basis of accounting, there are still some disclosures on important information for the users of your financial statements like debt, the loggers' pension plan, so there's still disclosures in the financial statements for certain items that may not be reported in the city's financial statements any longer. We did not encounter any significant difficulties in dealing with management in performing our audits, and we had no disagreements with management on accounting or auditing issues. I should note that we did our audit in the midst of the pandemic, and if that's still going on, but we did all of our audit remotely, and we were able to get it done, and I think fairly well and on time compared to prior years, so we'd like to thank Heather and Tara and their team for all of their assistance and cooperation and additional flexibility this year since we were there. Last but not least is our management letter. When we perform a financial statement audit, the purpose is to give an opinion on the financial statements and not to give an opinion on internal control, but when we perform that risk assessment process as part of our planning procedures to determine our audit procedures, we do take a look at internal control as it relates to financial reporting, and if we have any findings or recommendations, we would include them in this letter. So we did not identify any material weaknesses, which is always a good thing. We did identify three significant deficiencies again this year related to bank reconciliations, especially now that the city is utilizing the modified cash basis of accounting. Cash is the primary asset recorded on the financial statements, so we would certainly recommend that the city consider performing bank reconciliations on a monthly basis going forward. Preparation of financial statements, this is one that will likely go away next year now that the city is utilizing the modified cash basis of accounting. And the last significant deficiency is related to network access, and that's primarily due to the limited staff in the city's office and the access to the utility billing system. We also made a few other recommendations just for the city to consider, one is related to the general ledger and some fund accounting issues, just with the, frankly, kind of funky ways that the accounting system handles certain things, and some inter-fund balances that have just kind of sat on the city's books for a number of years. We recommend taking a look at those and potentially writing them off. So any questions or comments about the financial statements, the auditor's communication letter, the management letter, the audit process in general, anything like that? All right, well, thank you all for your time this evening, hopefully that was short and sweet enough.
Really? Quick, quick, so we couldn't compare the way we used to do it to this audit because we changed, but next year we'll be able to compare.
Yes, absolutely, because right now, if you're just looking at the fund financial statements, there's really only cash, there may be some restricted cash and maybe some deposits sitting there, but if you compare that to last year's financial statements, there's also fixed assets, long-term debt, a cash receivable, accounts payable, all of the pension plan balances, so there's really no way to frankly compare the two years.
So if you own Centray, Missouri, you feel good about this. If you were the owner, you'd feel very good about it, that's good coming from you. That's a good feeling. If we paid you.
We do want to thank you guys for all of your help with transferring over to this modified cash basis. It was a lot easier with the full GAAP accounting, we were doing a lot of journal entries because we had to take, essentially what we were doing is making our financial statements for the end of the year as like a snapshot of time, exactly, you know, like how we ended the year exactly on those days, so we'd have to take some invoices that we paid in April and May and take them back to the prior fiscal year and then, you know, things like that, so it was a lot of work on the other end. And Tara did a great job getting all this information together and working with the same new way.
The question I have for both you ladies, or three ladies especially, is what did we say? I mean, because the other was so labor-intensive, I mean, you and Tara were spending an unbelievable amount of time trying to get you the information you all needed, and it was painful. For you all on your accounting side of it to audit, how much time do you think you got back? Ten percent, fifteen percent, twenty percent, or less?
So it was certainly less painful this year, but I think next year's really going to be the year to tell what the savings are from both a time and cost perspective, because we did, before we even came in to do the audit of these modified cash basis financial statements, we assisted the city with converting the books from the prior GAAP method to what you're seeing here. So there was some time and of course costs associated with that.
But there should be a large difference.
There should be a significant difference.
Year-over-year, once we're on this program.
Next year, yes, absolutely. I can't get these financial statements any shorter than this.
I think this is pretty good, I think it's one book works.
Yeah, one book works, and it is all in there, so. Okay, well, if you guys have questions after this evening, just let Heather and Tara know.
I'd like to thank you on behalf of the city and what you've done to help us convert to it. It was a big process, and you guys were very patient and very helpful, and we appreciate that, and it just, I think, reflects all the individuals that make up Williams Keepers, so I think you did a great job for us and a big part, so thank you.
Great, thank you, we appreciate you and the work, and I think ultimately these are financial statements that are more understandable and user-friendly for the users of the city's financial statements, so hopefully we're in a better position now. Okay?
Thank you very much. That moves us to item four, consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion after you looked over A, B, C, and D. To determine if we could just approve all of it at once, for the Aldermen, but take the time, look that over.
There was an error in here, I saw it last night. It was on last week's meeting. Bob had asked if Officer Fager, that Officer Fager was asking about the cadet program. It doesn't say Fager, that's a different name here.
General Government Public Safety.
This is Officer Baker, page sixty-four. Does that change, if you all can tell, Heather? Change that?
Make a motion we approve the consent agenda as amended.
I have a first and a second to approve the amended consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, it moves us down to accounts payable over twelve hundred fifty dollars, equaling five hundred forty-nine thousand, three hundred seventy-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Make motion we approve the accounts payable over one thousand two hundred fifty dollars and grants available now, five hundred forty-nine thousand, three hundred seventy-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents.
First and second to approve the twelve hundred fifty dollars finishers, or twelve hundred fifty dollars meters, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. That moves us down to college from citizens. So I think we got citizens, so.
Yeah.
We've got somebody, so come up and.
Okay.
Tell us, can you tell us your address and your name, people might know who you are. I don't know your exact number, but I know you're on Jefferson Street, so.
Right, Valerie Warner, three twelve South Jefferson Street. And I'm here tonight on kind of a request of Robert Hudson, because I sent everyone, all the Aldermen, an email asking for the city to consider a burn ban in the city of Centralia, and so I've made a couple of copies of things for all the Aldermen and for you, Chris.
Thank you.
And let me make a note, this first one, I misunderstood. I highlighted street and alley, but I guess that applies to any of the things that are on the not burn list. So people are allowed to burn on the street and in the alleys, correct?
No, they're not allowed to burn on the city right of way.
Well, I have two neighbors, one burns on the street, one burns in the alley, and I really don't want to be in the paper. And the one neighbor has burned three times last week, so it's very difficult for me to live, and I mean, hopefully I'm not the only one, since I'm the only one talking about it, but it's very difficult for me to live in that environment because it's hard for me to breathe. And I don't have asthma, I don't have any underlying health conditions other than that I'm super sensitive to smells and different things. But I do have a granddaughter that visits me on occasion, she does have asthma, so burning of leaves could trigger that. I am here only seasonally now, I get the heck out of here in the winter, but so I love being here in the spring, I love being here in the fall, I love having my house open, I love having my clothes hanging out, and then my neighbors are burning, so I have to close my windows and I have to bring my clothes in, so. Anyway, so I guess, I don't know if you want to, I highlighted street and alley. So that's two of my neighbors, and then there's another neighbor, and at Robert's suggestion in his email replied back to me, I think it's somebody on Early Street, because I walk my dogs every night, so that's how I know all this. So I'm walking my dogs, and there's someone on Early Street, I believe, that they burn trash. They burn things that smell like plastic, very obnoxious odors. So instead of me handing this to everybody, I'll just hand that and pass it around. And then the other thing I brought for you tonight, oh, so Robert said, oh, here, we're having meetings this night and this night come, I'm like, well, what do you want me to do? So I guess this is an in-person presentation, or back up to my email where I said, I would really appreciate the city considering this. And these two things, the first statement is from the Environmental Protection Agency, and the bottom statement is from the American Law Association on the hazards of public burning. And so I guess that's all I have to say.
All right. Robert, I got the mail, we looked at it, we.
Well, yes, you and Robert required, and I appreciate that.
And so Robert had asked you up, the question I have is this, we have, we talked about this the other day a little bit, talked to the chief, we have, so have you ever, have you called when that occurrence was going on and made notice with the police department that?
Well, I did, I have not, the first, so the first time I did was, I don't know, Wednesday or Thursday of last week. So my one neighbor burned Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday last week, and then my other neighbor about three weeks ago had a huge bonfire down in the alley, and it went well after dark, so, and I think that's part of the rules, you're not supposed to burn after dark. And one night, when my husband was here and we were walking the dogs, we were walking down Early Street, and somebody was burning trash, and it smelled like they were burning plastic. I didn't know that I could report that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I mean, as I said in the last email, if you call or report it, please come out and look at it, and then we find out if they're breaking law or not, and that helps us understand exactly what's going on and what to address, if there is anything to address, so we know what it is.
Well, especially chemical smell, you know, I mean, that's pretty.
And this person is burning things that have chemical smells, but.
If I can interrupt here for just a minute, I will tell you, last night, my wife and I were bikes late last night at nine o'clock, and we both agreed that there was something in that neighborhood, I'm not too far away from Early Street.
Oh, okay.
That was severely obnoxious.
Yes.
I should know that from there.
So I would totally agree with you. What you have to understand is, as Robert was trying to explain, it's complaint-driven, okay? If we go by and we see something burning after dark, yes, we can do something about it, but in the daytime, the thing is, a lot of that ordinance is complaint-driven, so if you will call us and say, hey, this is what's going on.
Well, I don't want to get a reputation.
No, I don't, I don't agree with that at all. I, I, I.
I feel like I already do, because I call whenever there's a loose dog, because I always.
Well, everybody calls when there's a loose dog.
I'm worried about that idea.
And it's not just keep trusting, cats, coos.
I think what it really boils down to, it really helps them in the moment, if they can get there and find out what's being burned and be able to see if there's an ordinance violation, then they can, then they can immediately, when it's happening, take care of it and start to send the message, we're not allowed.
And you can report it honestly.
That's the way we want you to.
I did not know that was an option, but so, my one neighbor that burns sticks in the alley, he's legal to burn sticks, just not in the alley.
That's right.
So my other neighbor that burns sticks and leaves, that's legal, but just not on the side of his yard next to the street. Is that my understanding?
It would, it would have to be looked at by an officer, because the fact is, you just. But also, I have a complainant, so the fact is, if I have a complainant that says, hey, this is really annoying them, I don't have, I would not, none of my officers are there telling me who you were, trust me on that one. So the fact is, if we have a complainant, we can do something about it. We could ask them, you know, put it out for some other time or something to that effect, so.
But, I mean, so I guess my point, my biggest points are, the city still allows burning of leaves and sticks.
Sure, sure.
Which still pollutes the air, which still bothers me breathing.
I totally understand.
Which still gets into my house, so I can't have my windows.
And you're addressing that in the correct form, so, but like I said, if you're looking for something for a short-term fix, don't ever have to.
Got it, and I appreciate that, but I also look for a longer.
Yeah, longer and fix six of these folks.
But, and, I mean, so anyway, that's just my concern, I don't think it's healthy for the environment, I don't think it's healthy for me, it, well, I mean, and that's the main reason I'm bringing it up is I just don't think it's a healthy practice to continue, and then I suffer consequences of the practice.
I totally understand.
So I appreciate you, appreciate that, but we'll take some time to think about this and talk about it and see what, you know, where it leads us.
Well, I appreciate that, and I just figured, I've gotten to the point where I'm tired of, and somebody just needs to know my concerns.
We appreciate you bringing it up.
Appreciate you bringing it up.
Absolutely, no question.
And so then I guess I'll just, I can go with that.
No, you're stuck, all right.
Take a picture before you leave, or I'll.
Yeah, we, we, get this, get the whole story.
So everybody knows.
This should be anonymous completely, so, there you go. Hey, thank you for coming in.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate it. We'll put that on to, we'll all just think about it, let's circle back and have a discussion about it on the next meeting, does that make sense? Let's think about it, ask some constituents.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, but I'd like first to do, what I'd like first to do is to talk about the leaves and the burning and the, you know, that sticks, that kind of thing, because I think a lot of people do it around town, and so we need to kind of weigh that, but the obnoxious, we need to just measure with code enforcement, which we will do if you get it, and so I would recommend right now, if it happens, that's going, I smelled some stuff that was really funky too, coming from back in the alley somewhere, or somewhere over there, I was going by your house, right, so, down Jefferson Street, so I get what you're saying, somebody's burning, if you're burning every day, I don't know, you already think I'm trash, but, or whatever.
Well, the one guy that's burning trash every day, he's retired, so he, you know, pedals around and breaks a little pile, and then every day, I have to close my house though, especially depending on which way the winds go. But, and about a week ago, this is just a personal problem, my air conditioning wasn't working, so when he was burning, I had to close the windows, so, and.
Well, yeah.
As a side note, somebody's burning in the city right now, when I was driving up here, so, I mean.
We'll start to keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that moves us now, any other citizens? All right, we're closed the open college from citizens. Moves us to action agenda, A is finance, we have nothing. B is legal, we have nothing, permits and licensing, we have nothing, purchasing, we have nothing, unless somebody says otherwise at this point. So that moves us down to, quickly, to number eight, which is old business. A is the police cadet program, and that was brought up, that Officer Fager was wanting to follow up on his initial request about that and that program, and is, what's, where are our thoughts on that?
I'm in favor of it, it was just a matter of timing, I think.
And is there, like, the cost, is there a limit in the budget for that?
It was less than what was in the community outreach budget or something.
Right, we have a outreach budget, okay, budget line item, which we have not used anything out of, I don't believe. And the main cost of it was the insurance with the Boy Scouts of America, it falls under Boy Scouts of America. And it was actually pretty reasonable, really. And that was the only actual cost to the city, I don't have to remember the number, it was a word, because I don't remember, thought of my head right down there someplace.
And I'm wondering if I do.
Yeah, it was, it wasn't outrageous, and that was the only thing that was going to cost the city, the mayor actually said he would buy the shirts, so I don't know. The fact is, like I said, it's.
Well, I did say that.
We do have.
Unless you get two hundred and eighty cadets, I don't think we need two hundred and eighty.
It's going to start at three to four, maybe five range, or something like that, something that's very easily manageable. And like I said, guys, they've gotten interested already, from some of the, some of the tenants that run town. It gives them an option, gives them something new and different.
I think that it's a day staying times that we're struggling with. It's going to be harder to get people to want to do law enforcement, so it's up to recruit some people and get them a taste of it, and see it in the right light. You know, the potential is that we potentially have some people that want to do law enforcement, because I'm going to guess over the next two or three years, or now, there's a lot of, a lot of. But if your kid says they want to be a policeman or firefighter, you might be thinking twice about that, because if you're a firefighter, you might get killed going to do your job to save somebody's neighborhood. So right now, the time limit is creating some issues for both of those sectors.
I would tell you honestly, there are at least, one, two, three. And these four guys in my department currently, including myself, are police cadets back when they were a lot younger, obviously, they were that. Several, several years ago, and you know, that's where I got my first things. And, you know, it's one of those things, because you're a disciple, I want to be a policeman or fireman, why don't I see where I ended up.
Expose them to it, in my mind, maybe something they don't want to, they may get interested in.
And that's one of those things that they.
That's fine.
Tips them a little bit, so. Like I said, I just.
So what do we need, a yes or no, or what are we going to do?
Actually, I think there's a legal issue, if it's, if you guys are getting insurance to the Boy Scouts of America, that is actually going through bankruptcy court proceedings right now, including the subsidiary for the insurance holding company that represents the Boy Scouts. So before you guys go too much farther, that is currently in litigation, I mean, because of all the child sex molestation cases, they're trying to settle. But the insurance holding company is a piece of that, so you might want to double check.
With that being said, I think we should hold off until you get more information.
Make sure the insurance company is.
I think we're.
See, see, see that's information I can nail.
I'm supportive of doing some of the programming, but we need to make sure that we.
And I've got a tip on it.
That's up to them to take care of this, right, not you? They need to carry.
I tell you what I'll do. I'll put our contact, Rob Townsend, and contact you to see where we're, where that all falls out at, because Rob Townsend lives here in town, and that's, that's his job.
Is that good?
Yes.
Yeah, you can reach out, and like I said, I mean, he's probably going to be like I am, I don't think any of us are really going to know the answer on the solvency of that fund until all of the claims and the bankruptcy proceedings are finalized, and I'm not trying to give you a.
No, no, that's a great answer, but that's just kind of. Here's what I got, I have an answer, and a legitimate reason why we can't go forward right this moment.
I think it's, I think it's fair to say that, unless I'm wrong, that we all are supportive of it, but we just got to dot our i's across our t's.
Nope. I understand that.
And that's what I remembered from our last meeting, we discussed it.
Right, right, so I'm pretty supportive, it was just pause for a little bit.
Well, that was a tiny issue, and I totally understood that, and this is a totally different issue, I appreciate that, so.
That's the biggest fundamental thing we have to have with the insurance application, that program, so.
So I guess it's up to you to make the same, you got it?
I think you're.
All right.
Unless you are being responsible.
No, I'm too busy.
Oh, okay, just checking, man.
So we're. We had favorable discussion about the program.
Right.
You would say.
We just need some answers to some questions.
Table it until the insurance can be validated one way or another, and that resolve.
Right.
Right?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's put we're out on that. We've worked on the new business of the appointments of the street board, moves us down to city administrator.
My report's in the packet, I ended up on vacation the first week of the month, but managed to stay pretty busy the rest of the time. We've been working quite a bit on the AMI system, the panelists, it takes up quite a bit of time, and then just right, we were wrapping up things for the audit. Wastewater treatment facility plans, DDQ, the, all those kinds of things, just working on those kind of projects, so if you have any questions, let me know. I did have to make a correction, because I have a copy from the previous year, and I had not changed the ordinances that I had worked on for the previous year, they said the Darby subdivision, and then the demolition contract with J.T. Holman, and so Linda Forman emailed me and let me know.
All right. Anything else?
No.
That's it? Okay, that moves us to our city attorney, how about you?
We had a good first day in Boone County Court today, so municipal court, first time in Boone County happened today, so it went well, we had forty-nine cases on the docket. We didn't have a whole lot of not shows. There's a new streamlined process for when you post a bond, and then you don't show up a second time, for bond forfeiture proceedings, where you forfeit a bond amount, a cash bond amount, and then it basically comes over to the city. So that process is now in place, and since we're over there, the court is able to utilize that process, so that those bond forfeiture ways are coming over here. We didn't see a whole lot of tickets in the month of August that came in from the city from municipal side, usually we average about ten to fifteen tickets, it seems like, for me all weekly, and we, I think we got a couple of tickets in August, so I think that just, we didn't have a ton of new tickets, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody was kind of, that's why a forty-nine seems like a fairly low number, and I thought it was a lot.
Forty-nine for the city of Centralia, like forty-nine?
Yeah, and ten, and ten of those was from one defendant, ten of those tickets were from one defendant.
Oh, yeah.
No, I was making it up, so make it, make it up for it, so, and then just working on stuff coming up for your planning, and so many of you on your possible vacation and other issues, so there you go, but municipal work went well.
Did the first law breaker know that they were making a history by going over there, they didn't get an award or anything?
No.
They didn't get a.
They didn't get nothing, a ticket.
No, he did, he did, he had an award for the most tickets I've ever seen, written by one defendant, so he does have his own award. He showed up. Oh, yeah, he showed up.
Well, good, anything else?
No.
Appreciate all you've been doing, you help us keep up with things. City clerk? Nothing, okay. As may arise, real quickly, I would ask a question, we're going to have this Wednesday night meeting, this administrative hearing.
Right.
Here, could you take a couple minutes, just kind of give us an overview of what that looks like, and what that's going to be, and you might tell us how many we have coming, I think there's four, is that correct?
Just two, I think we're anticipating just two.
Okay, okay.
So the process will be is, you'll have a neutral hearing officer, and part of the motivation for the neutral hearing officer is because during our municipal court proceedings with one of the defendants, she's a defendant there, she's a respondent on this side of things when you move to the administrative, has made claims which are not founded, they're not, in my opinion, anything, you know, with a foundation, but she has made them, and since we have gone through this with her once before, that the city mayor in particular is trying to sell her property, and there's a gold mine, when she says gold mine, she literally means a shaft with gold underneath her house. There's a gold mine underneath it, and the mayor is trying to sell it, and the city is trying to profit off of it. So after her numerous statements in municipal court, it was just decided that you should have a neutral hearing officer, that way it's, there's no claim, whether found and unfounded.
I think we should have one.
And what about psychiatrists?
I think, don't you think we should, we should always have one?
I, I heard, there's absolutely nothing wrong with it, it just makes sure that everybody knows that, you know, there's a person with a law degree that listens to the evidence, rules on the evidence, and acts as an impartial listener. You all will hear the evidence, your hearing officer will ask you, you know, for your findings. He will then direct, usually me, the city attorney, to draft a finding of fact and conclusions of law, based on how you all choose to rule, if there is a nuisance or if there is not. There is a court reporter present during these proceedings, so I have to be mindful, as does everybody else, speak up loudly, but speak slowly, so that this person can get down on all of your words. She cannot document, you have to verbalize, law enforcement, she says she have to speak up, you know, court reporter can't, you know, take sound witness shakes their head, or, you know, Lord of Alder person shakes their head in response to a question.
They can't record uh-uh or uh-uh's.
Yeah, that's for the yes or no. So we have some stuff. Well, for, it's, you guys aren't, you guys would literally sit as many judges in an administrative hearing, so we present evidence first, it's our burden, necessity to present our side of the evidence. Once we present our case, and the other side has the ability to cross-examine our witnesses that we present, then they will have the opportunity to either put on their own evidence, or make a statement if they choose. You don't have to make a statement, but this is not a criminal proceeding, so most of the time, people will try to make a, you know, some sort of statement on their behalf, you guys will then consider the information. You know, your hearing officer may ask questions, so we have two proceedings. My understanding are that it's going forward, and the first one's probably going to be the longer one, if we have four, as well, at least three anticipated witnesses, possibly a fourth for the city. Chief, I tried to call you earlier today, but I didn't get you, but we need Officer Fager to please attend.
All right, do that.
Thank you.
By the end of the night, there will be a ruling made on each.
Not, not a formal ruling, you guys will make a decision, correct, and then the hearing officer will, you know, then be corrected. You have to make, and then I'll have to draft up something, because I'm assuming that he is going to ask me to draft it up, that's the typical modus operandi, then I have to draft it up, I have to take the evidence that I hear. Sometimes you may have to look for a transcript, hopefully not, in this case, we will not, we will take and wrap up the evidence, the order will then issue from the hearing officer, the mayor will then sign as part, you know, a part of this process, and it will be formally served on the party involved, so in this case, you have the homeowners in that case. So the whole process takes about thirty days, from the time you hear the evidence to the time that's actually presented to the offending party. Then that person has fifteen days to file a notice of appeal to the Boone County Court, should they choose to, if they don't like the outcome.
So if they go into appeal, does it come back to us, or does it go on?
It goes, it goes on, we will, we would have to litigate it with new evidence. Now, the people that testify will have to come back and retestify more than likely, but in terms of your all this involvement, the answer is no, that'll just be, it'll be an actual formal civil court proceeding at that point.
Are we allowed to know the two locations?
I don't see why not, we've got.
Actually, we ended up with three, we have four, I sent out four notices. We've been just talking to one defendant, or.
No.
Responded. Responded. And he is in the process of selling the property, we talked, so the real estate agent, we know that they're getting it listed, they're going to demolish it. We talked to another one, they're getting ready to demolish it, but they are sending somebody to this. The other one, there, the, there's a third one that I have not spoken to, and then I've spoken to somebody, so it's Four Kilo Drive, one forty-six West Burnett, three oh eight North Jefferson, and seven twenty South Central.
And some of these may result, I hope, at least one of them that's on the list may result in what's known as a consent order, do you agree, you know, basically questions, they will be up there, do you agree that your, you know, your property constitutes a nuisance? Do you agree that the following needs to be done to remediate the nuisance? Do you agree to, you know, move forward with remediating by, you know, either tearing the building down, or whatever is necessary? So you may hear a consent, you know, where somebody says yes, yes, and yes, and that's very short, so then you all would hear that and consider that, find that, you know, a nuisance exists based on the consent statements from the person, and then you draft up an order, and those are a lot faster.
I mean, do we put a time limit on if they're saying they're going to tear it down?
Oh, that, yeah, those sort of things, when you guys, let's say you decide that there is a nuisance on the property, as part of that order, you can say that, look, within forty-five days, you have to have it demolished. If not, the city will then have to step in, demolish it, and a lien will be attached to your property.
Right now, oh, sorry, right now, the way the code is written, we can send out a notice that says, we've noticed that you have not had any activity, or sufficient progress has been made, and there's not been made for ninety days. But in some of these cases, they've been out about the houses for a long time.
This time we're serious, I think.
Well, I don't have time to be wasted, you know, I mean, we, the reason we've went to this format is for us to be able to get things moved through that have been, you know, ongoing nuisances for us. And it's, keeps getting continued and stuff in the other courts, so I appreciate everybody wanting to do this, and taking all this administrative hearings, it takes, it might take, it might take a night, an extra night, a month for us to do these for a while, but I think once we start to do them, and when we start to give notices, they know that we're going to move forward with an expectation of an end result, it's going to mean to the ordinance violation being.
Has everybody looked at this property, went by and looked at it? You all, this Four Kilo Drive.
I know we're all four properties.
I didn't know the other three, I only, I only drove by Kilo.
Yeah, I've been called about Four Kilo Drive, it's someone I work with who stops by my office about, once a week, since I found out we were having this hearing.
So where do we stand on the house that burned on Allen Street?
The two story house. First started down, they built the two new ones.
Where they burnt the shit next, right next to their house.
Back end's wide open.
Yeah, where are we at on that?
How long ago did that happen?
I thought they were turning, they, yeah, I thought they were still fixing it up.
Ninety days ago?
Yeah, to me, they pulled a dumpster in there, and now the dumpster's gone, and to me, nothing's been done.
Doesn't look like there's anything.
Yeah.
It could very well be that open. Yeah, the back end's open.
It'd be the third house.
Third house.
Third house. You got the two new ones.
Yeah, switch back to curve.
Third house on the right. Third house on the right.
You gotta go look at, look at the alley, go through the alley.
Go through the alleys, right.
Yeah, go through the alleys.
You want to go through the alleys, that's the part that burned, yeah.
So the front of it doesn't look too bad, the back end of it is.
So, okay. Any, any other thoughts and discussion on that?
Sure.
We good, okay. So as may arise. Was there anything?
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a second, Mr. Rogers, Hall and Fair adjourned. All opposed? We are adjourned.